I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This administrative, informal, and workshop session of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 4:01 PM on this fifth day of April 2022. Members of the public are able to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It is the school board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the 6 o'clock formal session. At 5:30, the board will conclude this session of the meeting unless the board votes to continue until 5:45. This session will conclude no later than that time to allow the board and administration to prepare for the formal 6 o'clock session. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers are Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. And to note for the record, Mrs. Melnick is absent tonight due to personal health reasons. So we'll begin with school board administrative matters and reports. Oh, I should add she'll be Zooming in. Okay. So administrative matters and reports. So this is anything outside of your regular committee or liaison assignment. So anybody have anything to report or share or wait till later?
Madam Chair, just one quick note if you're wondering. Ms. Allen's not going to be joining us. She has, she's now the proud mother of a brand-new baby, Olivia. And so she will be out for a little bit. And I have pictures I can share at the break. But anyway, she will, she will not be with us for the next few meetings, as I'm sure you all understand. But we wanted to make note of that and congratulate her.
Thank you. Obviously, our very best wishes from everyone in this room. Okay. All right, then. It looks like we'll go on and begin with our first formal session of the evening, transportation and update. We have Mr. Jack Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chairman Melnick, members of the board and experts. As you know, our ability to recruit and retain bus drivers has been challenging in recent years. This challenge is not unique to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and it has affected our ability to deliver the level of service not only of what we expect in Virginia Beach. We are not able to even get close to meeting a suitable standard for delivering transportation to our students. This is going to be an extremely challenging presentation because there is almost no good news. There is one element of good news, but before I get to that, let's take a look at how significant the challenge is. We have 610 bus driver allocations. Currently, only 455 of those allocations are filled. Of those 455 allocations, on a daily basis, about 60 to 75 bus drivers are not available to transport kids. That means that on any given day out of 610 bus drivers, we have about 380 drivers available to transport students. Our on-time rate, meaning does the bus arrive at its intended stop or school within a five-minute period, should be greater than 95%. That's the standard. Currently, we estimate that our on-time rate is about 65%. The number 65% is largely due to our low numbers of available bus drivers. Given the low number of bus drivers, we routinely need to double up our routes, which means that a bus driver driving two loads' worth of kids and servicing two routes at the same time. Sometimes it's better to double back, and that means that there isn't enough room on a bus to double up. That bus driver completes their run and then goes back to pick up and deliver a second group of students from the same school. It's essentially requiring one bus driver to serve two roles, a role as two bus drivers. It's not hard to imagine how a bus driver who needs to do two runs or doubles back to do two runs will cause them to be late to their next assignment. And depending upon how early in the day they have to double up or double back, it's likely to delay them for the remainder of their assignments throughout the course of the day. Coming into this year, we knew that COVID was going to be an substantial impact, and we asked parents where possible to transport their own students to school for safety reasons, for COVID safety reasons. It was effective, and it reduced our burden so that we are now only transporting approximately 36,000 students this year. But that's expected to increase next year. In preparation for this school year, when parents signed up for transportation, over 48,000 students requested transportation. And we project next year approximately 48,000 will also require transportation. That means that we will need to transport about 25% more students next year than we're transporting currently. To do that, we need to hire and train 140 bus drivers. And we have observed an approximate 60% completion rate for those who have entered training. So in order to field 140 bus drivers, we need to hire approximately 233 candidates for training. In fairness, if we attract currently qualified candidates, it eases the burdens, but we need to plan for worst case. Other good things to know about training is that it takes trainees from four to six weeks to complete training and be ready to transport students. And there are only 13 classes available between now and the beginning of next school year. Each class typically trains about 30 trainees. This graph is intended to help visualize the challenge. In order to be ready to begin the next school year, we need to have about 120 bus drivers by the beginning of August with 30 more in training. By July 1st, we need to have hired and trained over 75 drivers. By May 15th, five weeks from now, we need to have hired and trained about 50 bus drivers to be on track. We have never hired and trained this number of drivers in such a short period of time in Virginia Beach. Additionally, these calculations assume that we retain 100% of our current drivers. For every driver we lose, we need to find a replacement. So retention is important for the plan. This challenge can result in basically two categories for solutions. The first category is compensation-related. The second category is redefining the requirement. Let's take a look at the first category related to compensation and our recent efforts to recruit and retain drivers. So the effort in recent years, it's too long to list on one slide. HR has done a thoroughly detailed job of putting together a list of all of the actions we have taken to be able to recruit and retain drivers. But I'm going to keep some big ones on this slide. So we increased bus drivers from U8 to U9 in 2014 and then to U10 in 2021. This past December, all Virginia Beach City Public School employees received a $1,000 incentive. And then, starting in January, bus drivers received an additional $2,500 incentive, which was divided up into payments delivered into each bimonthly paycheck for the remainder of the year. In November, we also offered a recruitment incentive, which compensated current employees who were able to attract new bus drivers to the division. $375 was intended to be awarded when the bus driver was hired, and the other $370 was intended to be awarded when the new bus driver completed 50 days on the job. We had high hopes for that incentive. Since the beginning of January, we have been unable to attract more drivers than we have lost. We are at a net loss of six drivers since implementing those changes. Clearly, that level of compensation is not enough. The recruitment incentive has been unsuccessful with only one award being earned. I mentioned earlier that there were two different categories to approach the challenge. The first one, which we just covered, was compensation. Last May, I also shared that we had intentions to look at the level of service that we deliver to pursue options to reduce our level of service to match our demonstrated ability to hire bus drivers. To review our transportation service, in addition to transportation leadership, leaders from DOSL and TNL, including special education, were fully involved. Here are some of the options we discussed related to service delivery. The first item is one that we have been and will continue to pursue, which is finding efficiencies. Efficiency don't cost anything and allows us to save buses and drivers while delivering the same level of service. We have captured a relatively small number of efficiencies over the past several years, about 10 to 12. And that savings to efficiency is already included in the calculation showing that we need 140 drivers. We also looked at other methods for transporting students that did not require yellow school buses. These included compensating parents, carpooling, and systems like Uber and Lyft. All of these come with risks and liability concerns, and ultimately wouldn't save enough bus drivers to make a dent in the 140 deficit. We also considered the potential for high school students to use Hampton Roads Transit. In addition to a potential bus savings due to that service reduction, part of the reason is that there's an educational component, a life skill, that's associated with using public transportation. There are public school systems in the country that use a similar model. However, those models tend to have a more fully-developed public transportation system than we do in Virginia Beach. Further, there is an inherent safety risk when students are riding a bus that does not fall under the Virginia Beach City Public School umbrella for safety and security. As an indication that we intended to leave no stone unturned, we observed other states using National Guard to transport drivers to schools as a COVID response, a response to their COVID challenges. Clearly, it's not a long-term solution, and given where we are in the COVID progression, it's unlikely to be useful. Now, this next group is related to how do we, how we deliver some of our programming and how we have previously done business. We discussed the suggestion to use the hub system for academy programs. So what does that mean, a hub system? Right now, our academy students are picked up at a bus stop that meets the same standards of bus stops for zone students. The concept of a hub system means rather than academy students proceeding to their assigned bus stop to catch their academy bus, they could proceed to their zone school. They could do that by either walking to their school if they reside in a non-transportation zone, or they would catch a bus to their zone school from their bus stop and then transfer to the academy bus to take them to their academy. So for example, Kempso High School students who attended academy program, that's not a Kempso High School, would pick up a school bus with all other zone students, arrive at school, get off the bus, walk to their academy bus, get on that bus, and then be transported to their academy. Kempso High School, in this case, would have approximately eight academy buses assigned that would bring those students to their various academies. This would be repeated at all high schools that serve academy programs, and it would be repeated at middle and elementary schools that have students who feed into Old donation school or Plaza MYP. It's a good thought, but it will, it will not save a significant number of buses for two reasons. First, it's easy to see the number of schools that would be needed to have academy buses for almost every academy in Virginia Beach. So multiply 11 high schools by eight or nine academies, eight if they have an academy on-site, nine if they don't have an academy on-site, and that's what you get for basic high school academy transportation approximately. Then add ODS and Plaza MYP, which attract secondary and elementary schools from across the city, and you can see that those numbers quickly add up. Second, our academy buses have been picking up zone students during the shortage to assist on our daily challenges. So the academy routing is essentially an extension of zone bus routing. There isn't much savings to be captured with the hub system. Moving on, if we consolidated our Spanish emergent program, which was discussed, we could save two buses. We also discussed centralizing our early childcare special education program into one central location. Right now, over 60 schools serve ECSE students. When spaces fill up at those schools and new students are identified to need the program, and there is no availability at their zone school, we must transport newly-assigned students to another site that has availability. We do this all year long, and it becomes challenging to manage those additions and incorporate them into the transportation plan. Centralizing the ECSE program into one facility, if possible, and if space permits, could provide a savings in number of buses required and make mid-year changes more seamless. It would be more efficient from a transportation perspective. However, trying to save 140 bus drivers by the beginning of next school year, we will not be able to substantially gain savings from this approach. We also discussed expanding non-transportation zone. Our current regulations require us to transport elementary students who live a mile or less from their school. For secondary, the distance is a mile and a half. This is more restricted than state standards for compulsory attendance. Now, the language in compulsory attendance under state law could be better, and I'll avoid going into great detail on that. The bottom line is, there is potential to increase the distance from a mile and a half for elementary students and two miles for secondary students. Extending our regulations to meet state requirements has a potential to yield a degree of savings related to buses and drivers. We would need to explore this further to know how substantial that impact is. However, there is no way to review all transportation zones for all of our schools and be ready with new non-transportation zones by the beginning of next school year. Further, this would be incredibly disruptive if executed on such short notice. This type of change would also have what I will call perception challenges with our families related to safety. So that leaves us with academies. Our academy programs require approximately 110 school buses and drivers. If the school board determined that it was in the division's best interest to pursue modification of delivery of transportation for next school year, the only way to successfully do that would be to discontinue academy transportation. I don't even like saying that. For those who are vested in our students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools and those who put students first, just hearing this will likely cause a physical reaction. I'm here to tell you that is not our recommended approach, but it is our reality. If we do not hire 140 bus drivers in order to be ready for next school year to transport our kids in a safe, reliable manner, the only area where we could potentially confidently modify the level of service to meet our ability to hire bus drivers under our current compensation plan is discontinuing academy transportation. I can see by the looks on everybody's faces, that's not where we want to be, and that's not our recommendation. Although we're strongly against any such decision, we know that you need details so that you can make well-informed decisions. Discontinuing academy transportation could save about 110 drivers, and saving 110 drivers saves us about 121 buses. And that is because we keep a surplus of 10% in our spare fleet. That means over a 15-year cycle that we would need approximately eight fewer buses per year, which would save $900,000 per year. We would also pay the salary of 110 fewer drivers. Added together, this could result in a potential savings on the order of $3.8 million annually. This figure does not even account for the fact that we would need to maintain 121 fewer buses. All that being said, this approach would be completely out of alignment with our values. Any consideration for not transporting all academy students to their schools would mean academies are only available to those students whose family have the resources to get their kids to school. We would have kids who have participated in academy programs for years and students who recently had the joy of being selected to an academy program only to find that if they couldn't find transportation, they would not be attending their academy. This approach doesn't line up with our values, and we do not recommend it. But that leads us back to our original challenge. How are we going to retain the drivers that we have, and how will we recruit and retain 140 additional drivers? We've been unsuccessful with our attempts to attract and retain drivers through compensation. So we looked at other models, and here's what we learned. I'm not going to go into each of the lists. I'm going to let you review it yourself. But you can see all of the attempts at compensation, mostly bonus-related, in the local area that were attempted. The one that may draw your attention is TransQuest. They offered a $5,000 bonus. They're a private transportation company. They received zero additional drivers after implementing that $5,000 bonus. So those things have not worked. So everything I've shared with you up to this point is not good news. Here is the one place of good news. There is one division that has solved this problem, and that school division is Chesterfield County Public Schools. At the beginning of this school year, they significantly improved their bus driver compensation package, and they've been able to attract and train 217 bus drivers in seven months. And their bus driver fleet is now fully healthy. You don't need to take my word for it. How about we hear it straight from the superintendent of Chesterfield County Public Schools and a message that he delivered to his community on March 22nd.
Hello, world's only superintendent for Chesterfield County Public Schools. I got some great news for you today. Zero bus driver vacancies. That's right, we are 100% staff. First of all, I want to thank the bus drivers, the transportation department, everyone who was with us before and has joined the team for doing a great job of getting to this point. I want to thank the parents. They did a great job when we asked you in August to drive your students to school. We want to thank you for helping us out. But we were excited, the double backs, buses running on time, and we are just excited that you helped us, and we want to thank you for that. We also want to thank the teachers and the school leaders for the outstanding job they did in working with our buses coming early and leaving late. They did a great job with that. Human resource people and the team, outstanding job in having job fairs, getting people involved, getting the word out, and helping people get through the process extremely quick so we could get bus drivers on the road driving your children to school. And finally, to the Chesterfield County leaders, the leadership of government, for helping us with the funding of this opportunity to pay the drivers what they, what they needed to start working and to recruit. So everyone, big team effort. Remember, we're better together. Keep up the great work. We didn't solve anything as long as we talk about it, we look at the problem, and we come together for a solution. Thank you.
So that's the good news. It's possible. We've seen another school division that had success. Here's the challenging part. The challenging part is to commit to a similar compensation package that was, that demonstrated success. It consists of a grade-level adjustment and an incentive or bonus during the course of the year and modification to some hiring constraints. Chesterfield County Public Schools is now paying $20.21 an hour for first-year drivers. Their drivers also received a $3,000 bonus divided up into five payments throughout the course of the school year. And there, and then there were some of the small adjustments that I'll share with you as part of our recommendation. Based upon the one place in the state of Virginia that we have seen success with attracting or retaining bus drivers, this is our recommendation to attract and retain 140 drivers to be ready to deliver the level of transportation that we value for our students by next school year. We recommend the following. Bus drivers be increased from U10 to U13, which equates to an increase of $15.65 an hour to $20.16 an hour. Substitute driver pay and Step 1 contact drivers would be adjusted to align with this pay increase. Drivers with verifiable commercial driving experience are recommended to be given year-for-year service credit. We currently don't do that for bus, we currently only do that for bus drivers, and we have challenges attracting other qualified bus drivers, other qualified drivers, excuse me. We recommend paying all expenses related to becoming an employee. For the most part, we do that right now, but right now, we don't pay for TB tests, and we don't pay for, pay for sleep studies if they are needed for the physical. We recommend paying bus drivers in training. They would receive a 30-hour contract with full benefits. We currently don't pay drivers during their four to six weeks of training. How many people can afford to go without a paycheck for four or six weeks in hopes that they are in the 50% of trainees to get to complete their CDO? For the '22-'23 school year only, we recommend establishing a $3,000 bonus, $3,000 driving incentive to be paid in six $500 installments throughout the course of the year. With bus drivers being moved to U13, we recommend the bus driver trainer and dispatchers be moved to U14. One grade above bus drivers. We have one bus driver and a trader. We currently have four dispatchers, but intend to pursue two more due to the, to the volume of work and length of the day. Dispatches are air traffic controllers of the school transportation system. When a route is uncovered due to absence, it is the dispatcher who ensures seamless coverage. All of the doubling up and doubling back that I shared earlier requires a dispatcher to coordinate fills in real time. They synchronize the adjustments. Without our dispatchers, those four to six employees, our ability to deliver smooth, seamless, reliable, safe transportation is significantly diminished. It's a critical position. These final three elements are not part of the Chesterfield Plan but are recommended solutions to challenges that we've been working on in transportation for years. To transport our summer school students, we need 250 drivers every summer. Currently, we only have 10-month contracts for all bus drivers. That means drivers must volunteer to support summer school. Further, they do not receive their regularly-hour rate for summer school transportation. They receive a reduced rate. On top of that, any money that they earn outside the 10-month contract does not fall under VRS. So they don't get the benefits that are associated with summer work. Our summer school programs are now part of our culture. We take care of our students, and our transportation compensation should align with that plan. And if we're unable to hire the number of bus drivers we need on an 11-month contract to transport students in the summertime, we recommend 10-month contract bus drivers receive their normal pay, not a reduced summer rate. And finally, we recommend increasing incentive pay for covering other runs. Currently, our bus drivers, if a bus driver doubles up or doubles back, they're compensated $8.50. It's roughly half of an, a half an hour of pay, and we recommend increasing incentive pay to $10 an hour, which would keep incentive pay at roughly half an hour pay. All right, the pros. This plan was modeled after the one plan in the state that has achieved success with hiring bus drivers. They hired 217 drivers in 70 months and now have zero bus driver vacancies. Further, the school boards of Newport News and Hampton both recently proposed budgets with similar increases in bus driver compensation. Norfolk and Chesapeake are also considering increases to their bus driver pay. This plan gives us the best chance to continue our expected level of services, and the funding can largely be supported by ESER funds for this year. The cons, it requires an additional annual commitment on the order of $9 million, which would need to be incorporated into future budgets. There is no guarantee that this plan will work. It is based upon a model that achieved, that achieved great success, but there are no guarantees. The only place where guaranteed savings can be achieved is by cutting programs like academy transportation, and we do not recommend that. And finally, there are perceptions. Many employees share concerns about being undercompensated, and some will likely be displeased when they see such an increase for bus drivers. Before we leave today, in addition to a decision on bus driver compensation, we would like your feedback on pursuing these areas where we could potentially reduce the number of drivers in years to come. In closing, we cannot proceed into next school year expecting to deliver our typical level of service with our current resourcing. To hire 140 bus drivers by the beginning of next school year, we recommend modifying bus driver compensation, which is modeled after the one school division in the state with success in hiring a similar number of drivers in a similar timeframe. We'll now open discussion and take your questions.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Hughes and then Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. I like this plan. I really do. And obviously, it has proven to be successful elsewhere. One thing I was curious about, though, the short, I mean, the shortage is greater now than it's ever been, but it's been something that's been brewing. Do we do exit interviews, and if so, what do they reveal?
So, Ms. Woodhouse, are you able to take the exit interview question?
So we, we do exit interviews, but it's voluntary only. So we really look at the paperwork that is submitted by each of the candidates. Typically, it's retirement. We have seen an increase this year in other employment-enhanced opportunities, which typically means they have secured a position that pays more than what we currently have. And so that's what we've mainly seen this year when it comes to the exit data for our transportation personnel.
Okay, thank you. And I just, one of the things I think that we don't always think about, I mean, not just us, but everybody, is that, I mean, teachers have students all day, but they are also in a building where they, they're able to get support when they need. When you have one driver out on the road with a lot of students, there's just no support because they're out there on the road if something happens. So I'm glad to see that we're doing this. I think this is very much merited. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Do you mind if I make one comment on that as well?
Sure.
So your, your question is a good question. It's a question that we ask ourselves because when
It's a question that we ask ourselves because when people leave employment, it's not just about compensation, there may be other things. So, we're very closely connected. So, Mr. Lash and I have met with our bus drivers. He meets regularly with the Bus Driver Association. We actually had Dassel join us for a meeting with the president of the Bus Driver Association to be able to talk about some of those concerns that they might have that are outside of compensation. And so, you know, we've been working with behaviors this year, and we have intentions to be able to continue training for bus drivers related to how to manage behaviors. And we're very well integrated to your point of making sure they get the level of support that they need when they connect with schools.
Well, I'm just thinking, if an emergency happens, they're not in a building where they can just reach out to someone very quickly. But, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mrs. Weems.
Thank you. Yeah, that was one of my questions, if you've met with the Bus Drivers Association, and why are bus drivers leaving? But you've already answered that. How large is Chesterfield? Is it larger than we are about? No, it's not. How many students?
They are 6,000. They're right at 6,000.
Okay, so very similar.
About the same size.
Okay, okay, thank you. Do they have academies? Do you know?
I do not know.
Okay. Because, do you know, Dr.?
They don't have academy programs like we do. They do have some specialized programs that they transport.
Okay. I was just trying to make sure, you know, what we're comparing to. Okay, so if I'm a bus driver now here in Virginia Beach and I work 30 hours or less, am I not getting benefits currently?
On your 10-month contract?
Mm-hmm.
I will turn that over to the HR team to make sure we get this correct.
Yes, all of our contracted drivers, if they're in an established FTE position, they receive benefits.
Okay, so what we're adding here with benefits is...
I was going to say, those are new drivers.
So, if you're referencing that 30-hour contract?
Yeah.
So, the point of that is, right now, when they enter training, that four to six weeks, right now, we do not offer any pay during that four to six weeks of their training. The recommendation is to pay them a 30-hour contract.
Okay, so that they would receive pay and benefits?
For those four to six weeks, and once they became a, got their CDL, then they would be paid as a first-year bus driver or whatever their year-to-year compensation was.
Okay, yeah. Excellent. I mean, I think that's just a great idea because, like you said, who can just take four to six weeks without pay or benefits? I mean, I'm surprised that we would get any. And Chesterfield is basically adding one, added one a day, one bus driver a day, and that's outstanding. So, yeah, I think, you know, definitely, this is the way to go because we've got to get these kiddos in the school and in the program that they've, you know, worked hard to get into and that they're so passionate about. Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson.
So, I'm pleased with this recommendation also. I've been saying for quite some time we needed to up the pay and that would generate more people. This is definitely the right approach, and I agree wholeheartedly, especially with the part of the 30 hours when they're in training because I can understand why. Somebody might not want to quit their job they're in and then go four to six weeks without pay. And if you didn't have a job still, that's difficult to be working like that because they're working and they're learning. So, I think this is absolutely something that we've needed to do for quite some time, and hopefully, we will have the success that Chesterfield has had. I'm hopeful. Thank you.
Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. Thank you, Ms. Freeman, for that detailed presentation. And I'm just reminiscing, a few months ago, I encouraged our school board to do a benefit compensation for our employees. And I do remember expressing that we take our bus drivers through such rigorous training, certification, until they're just a few steps away from Amazon, DHL, FedEx, hiring them for this amount of money. So, I was, it was an urgent feeling that I had, and I encouraged my school board members to move on that, and they did. But now, we are seeing the reaction to us not doing it. I do like the program, and you're right, cutting back on the transportation for our academies and any type of cutback with transportation. It is another equity concern that will happen, and I don't think we can afford to go through that as well. I do like the program. I do look forward to moving forward on this as well. Thank you so much.
So, if I may, and this is a more granular question. Typically, and I'm even speaking pre-COVID, so 46 students typically requiring transportation. That's about 20,000 less than we have now. So, I can't recall as a parent, are parents typically asked upfront if you're going to require transportation?
Yes, they are. And so...
Because obviously, what I'm leading up to are the juniors and the seniors.
Yeah, so a year or two ago, we made that the standard, that they had to specifically request transportation. This year, we're actually working on that communication right now to get parents to sign up for next year because that enables transportation to be able to put together a more efficient plan when they do that. And the benefit of doing it now is when all students are in school. Because we previously did it during the summertime, and it's a little bit more challenging to get information from parents during that time. So, we're doing it when we have the school supports that are in place to be able to help get the best possible information we can. So, the basic answer to your question, though, is yes, they must request transportation to be able to receive it.
And Dr. Robertson's shaking his head. So, it's possible with my kids being out as long as they have been that we were not in the late, early 2000s, late 1990s asking this question, but somewhere along the way, it became?
Two years ago. A year or two ago is when we implemented the requirement to sign up for transportation. Previous to that...
So, it was connected with COVID at that point?
It was not connected with COVID. It was connected with how do we efficiently transport our kids? And we knew that the previous plan had essentially been go to all the same bus stops that you did the year before, see where the kids were, and then modify your plan in order to be able to effectively use the resources that we have. We started requiring that they sign up for transportation. So, that's when the change happened, it was just recently.
So, this 20,000, do we have any, in terms of the spread of this, is it mostly upper classmen or is it across the board where even some elementary parents have opted?
So, the 20,000 that don't require, so you're talking the difference between 46 and the...
And the present student population.
So, we have non-transportation zones. So, anybody who lives in a non-transportation zone would not get a school bus transportation school. We have parents that they make the decision that they want to drive their child to school so they don't request transportation. It can be any number of factors, and certainly from a high school standpoint, if they hold a driver's license and they prefer to drive to school, then they wouldn't request transportation. So, it's, there's an elementary school, middle school, and high school impact to all of these. It's not just juniors and seniors.
So, I mean, we could be in a lot worse shape because we're talking about, well, more than, I'm not going to try and do the math, but we could be talking 20,000 more students even, so.
I appreciate your comment. It's hard to imagine we could be in worse shape than we are right now and still functioning.
But we will reiterate our gratitude to those families who stepped up during COVID, who may not have been and planned to revert back, that, you know, those who, because I'm sure certain families did go to extra lengths to help us during the height of the pandemic, and we are grateful for that.
I agree.
Dr. Spence?
Yeah, so just sort of next steps for us, you saw the timeline that Mr. Freeman shared early on in terms of the urgency of hiring. So, this doesn't require board action, but we wanted to get a board conversation, and it sounds like you all are generally in favor of us moving forward. And so, my plan, my intention is to move this forward. We've already been working in human resources and in our budget team to make sure that that can happen expeditiously, and so our plan is to get moving so we can get the hires going. Wanted to make sure, as I say that, that I want to point out one more time, the, one of the challenges with that is that we will have a $9 million salary gap that we'll need to incorporate eventually into the operating budget, not for the next school year. We can cover that under the ESER grants during the next school year, and for the remainder of this year, we'll need to amend the grant, and we've already begun looking at that. So, that's not going to be our challenge, but just know, in our next budget discussion, we're going to need to at least handle some, if not all, of this in the next budget, and we'll know more about that once we know about what's left in our grants next year. So, with that conversation, I'd still like to see some nodding heads to make sure we know we need to move this forward, even though everybody understands that that will be a top-budget priority for us. Okay, then.
So, we have some final names in the queue if I could ask first, since Mrs. Riggs has not spoken yet, and then we have Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Anderson with a final question or comment, I presume.
You might have said this, Dr. Spence, but did you say we would start, or would we start this now? Right now?
Soon as we possibly could. We would obviously have to work with HR and the remainder of the team on that.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I just had one more suggestion, and it's not related to compensation, but it's something that would help bus drivers out that I've spoken with them about. I know when I was substitute teaching, I didn't have access to, obviously, students' full records, but I did have access to enough that if a student had special needs that I might need to address, I had that information. And I have spoken to bus drivers who would like to, you know, have information about students that they might have to react to. Some students do have special needs that could need to be addressed on a bus, and at the point where something happens, it might be too late if you have a child that's having a seizure or something, and they didn't know they were prone to that and other things. So, having some sort of a notebook on students for needs that they might need to address would help them a lot.
Yes, ma'am. Seeing head nods, we will look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mrs. Anderson.
So, I hope that we're going to advertise this heavily.
Yes, ma'am.
TV, newspaper, whatever it takes.
Yes, ma'am. That's part of the...
We need to get the word out pronto.
Agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, and to your team.
Thank you. So, before I leave, last pieces of feedback that we wanted were on this slide, is there, just need guidance from the school board of intentions on pursuing this to potentially develop more efficiencies moving forward? So, the creating a centralized center for ECSE students, that seems to be reasonable. If you're comfortable with that, we can go down that road and develop that plan over time and see what's in their realm of possible. Clearly, we would come back and brief you if we saw any opportunities there. The non-transportation zone expansion, really need to get your guidance because we would not want to go down a road expending a great deal of effort if there was lack of comfort expanding from elementary school, walking a mile to walking a mile and a half, and secondary students going from walking a mile and a half to walking up to two miles.
So, I'm very uncomfortable with that part of it. I just, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm not comfortable with expanding the non-transportation zone currently. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but...
Do we have any information on other school districts and where they land on this issue?
So, to answer that question, I have not polled other school divisions for how they approach this. The law allows, based on the way that it's wording, up to a mile and a half or two miles. It's really a matter of where we are from a leadership standpoint and level of comfort.
Mrs. Franklin.
I think I would feel more comfortable if we want to go ahead and look at implementing the centralized center for now and then explore if we, you know, have to do the non-transportation zone after we've exhausted every other effort. That's maybe what I would feel comfortable with.
Thank you.
Mrs. Weems, did you have your hand up, and then Mrs. Riggs?
So, the centralized center for early childcare, special ed, how would that look, kind of? Can you just kind of go into that?
So, we would need to take over 60 schools that service ECSE. We would need to find a centralized location and assign all of those students to that one school. So, they would be transported from wherever they reside to that one, ideally, one centralized location. The word that we're getting from transportation right now is that it would really need to be one site. There's a potential, but we don't know that it could be a number of sites just really closely positioned together, but that would be something that we would need to review. So, all of those ECSE students throughout the course of the whole year would transfer...
And we've got the space and we have a space to centralize that?
That would be the work that we would need to do, and we don't want to do that before, we don't want to do that work and come back and you say, "We never wanted you to do that in the first place" because it's a lot of work. So, that's why we're trying to get your guidance up front.
And so, right now, these children go to their home school. Is that correct? Or do we have, how many sites do we have now?
So, if there is, it's over 60 sites. If there is availability at their zone school, they go to their zone school. If that classroom fills up, we need to get them into another classroom that doesn't have space. So, and this is what I was trying to get at, is frequently throughout the year, we have new students that are assigned to ECSE, and if their zone classroom is filled up, we need to find a bus to transport them into wherever the availability is, and that can be across town.
Right. Yeah, that's, I'm not too comfortable with either one of these, to tell you the truth. I just, I just think early childcare, special education, if you're routinely putting these young children with special needs on a bus every day, that's very far from where they live. I don't know. I'm not comfortable with that, and I'm not comfortable with expanding the walking zone, even if it's within law. I mean, I'm looking, I've got a fifth grader, and I wouldn't even feel comfortable with her walking a mile. So, I'm not real, I'm comfortable with the other stuff, and I'm not comfortable with either one of these. Sorry.
This is the feedback we're looking for.
Mrs. Anderson.
I think the thing that I worry about is the legality of putting special education children in the same facility. There's some guidelines, I believe, that indicate that they shouldn't all be put together.
It's the least restrictive environment.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you, Ms. Lanetti. A least restrictive environment. And I realize that transportation is, you know, is way up there for a problem for this, but I just have a problem with, and instead of having 60, instead of looking at, you know, just one centralized location, I might be more acceptable in thinking about, you know, maybe putting them together, like maybe having, instead of having 60 different locations, maybe having 20 different locations. Do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely do. The feedback that we got when we did the high-level review is it really doesn't, from a transportation standpoint, doesn't save much from the bus unless you get down to an extremely small number, probably one.
Right. Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I think we have your, the feedback that we need, which is to not pursue these in the immediate term. We will evaluate the changes that we're about to make, and, you know, if we're able to achieve similar success to what we've seen at Chesterfield County, we will be fine. It'll take time to be able to get them trained up and go, but in the long run, we know that we're going to be fine. We're confident we'll be fine.
Can always revisit in the future. It's always a year-by-year.
I'll miss Mrs. Riggs. One more.
I just wanted to ask, how many ECSE students do we have around? Do you know? You don't have an idea of?
We can get that information to you, but...
Just for curiosity's sake, just to see how many there are. Okay. All right, thank you.
So, now we are done, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, we have our School Resource Officer update with Mr. DiMartini in the wings.
Yes, ma'am. So, I'm just going to share the short version, so you all received information a little bit ago, similar situation with the police department this year, and there are challenges related to manning. So, for these discussions, just as a reminder, we won't talk any details that will relate to vulnerabilities. We're just going to talk high-level details for where we are and potential ways that we can mitigate things moving forward. If you want to talk levels of detail, we can go on a closed session as you desire and be able to have those discussions with you, but we won't do it in a public forum. All right, with that...
Thank you. And if I may interrupt for a moment to announce, Mrs. Owens is also participating via Zoom with this meeting now.
Good afternoon, school board members. Superintendent Dr. Spence, I am Tommy DiMartini, Director of Safety and Security. This presentation seeks to provide a brief overview of the success of the Virginia Beach Police Department's SRO program and a proposal that seeks to bolster our security posture in the future. The School Resource Officer Program has been an integral part of our school community for over 30 years. In addition to providing... In addition to providing the first line of defense against potential life-threatening situations, SROs have become a dependable and invaluable component of our school system. Virginia Beach Police Chief Paul Nutigate shares these sentiments and has pledged to continue to support this valuable partnership between the VBPD and the VBCPS. SROs serve the police department and our schools by sharing updates on information that helps with safety and security. SROs are the point of contact for our VBCPS administrative teams, staff, parents, and students on police-related matters. They establish relationships with the administrations and communicate daily to ensure that the safety and security of our schools remain a priority. SROs interact with students every day they are in our schools. We have seen the benefits of effective communication between SROs and our students. These personal interactions serve to both humanize our police officers and foster a trust between the police and our students. The development of these relationships is critical in enabling students to seek assistance when needed, or provide information that may be critical to school and community safety. They are an extended, are they expected, they are an expected visible presence and deterrent to criminal activity in and around our schools. Families have come to know their resource officers and often turn to them in times of trouble. Our SROs also provide a police presence at special events and athletic games. As you're aware, officers in our building significantly reduce response time to critical incidents in our schools. The Virginia Beach City Public Schools recently advised, were recently advised that due to a critical lack of manpower in the Virginia Beach Police Department, a portion of our SROs will be reassigned to other duties outside of our assigned schools. Similar to years past, this reallocation of resources will be completed in two phases, with the first phase starting early in April. We understand that Chief Nutigate has a difficult task of maintaining a robust, a robust presence of SROs in our schools, while also maintaining proper police coverage throughout the entire city during these shortages. And unfortunately, this means we will be faced with a significant reduction in SRO presence within our schools for the remainder of the year. On March 4th, we met with Chief Nutigate and his command staff members. There was a consensus on the need to do something to fill these gaps. And at our request, the police department agreed to implement certain patrol strategies that will help mitigate the loss of coverage. We worked together to determine how best to select which SROs to reassign and from which schools. We considered proximity to other schools and the size of schools that may be affected. Zone officers may be, zone officers which may consist of the reassigned SRO have been asked to pay special attention to our affected campuses, and to make every effort to be present as much as possible throughout the day. The remaining SROs will focus their attention on schools that might not be covered. And we are confident we will have an adequate police response and attention should it be necessary. We believe that these strategies will help mitigate the adverse impact of the diminished presence of our uniformed officers in the school. For your awareness, over the last year, the number of officers pulled from our schools has doubled. Chief Nutigate has assured us that we should be back to full complement of 27 officers when the next school year begins in September. However, he has also advised us that it's unlikely the police officer deficit will be corrected in the near future. Based on this prediction of VBPD shortages, it is logical to conclude that we are likely to be faced with an SRO crunch moving forward during the spring seasons. I think it is clear how we feel about our SRO program. We do not want to see these officers removed from our school community. And as I mentioned earlier, a fundamental real benefit of having an armed police officer in our building significantly reduces the response time during a critical incident. Common sense tells us, the closer an officer is to a conflict, the quicker a resolution can occur. We have seen time and time again how these officers have saved lives in incidents around the country. It is with this notion in mind, the Office of Safe Schools has prepared a proposal that would assist in supplementing the lack of armed protection moving forward. We are recommending a plan that would allow for several of our current security assistants with prior law enforcement experience to carry a firearm while on duty. We've identified approximately 15 retired police officers that currently meet the criteria for this program immediately. This will not only fill the SRO armed protection gap, but will supplement and strengthen security measures when SROs return in the fall. The picture shown is of a security officer in another school division that has implemented this program, and they currently use law enforcement retirees. Our VBPD partners and the Office of Safe Schools are prepared to begin the process and initiate this program. Currently, Virginia mandates that all school security be certified through the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. The Office of Safe Schools ensures that all security assistants meet these requirements, certifications, and standards. We would institute advanced training in addition to the DCJS requirements, training that emphasizes safety, security, and our expectations as they relate to carrying a firearm on duty. The training would be conducted by the Virginia Beach Police Department, Police Department's Firearms Training Unit. The Office of Safe Schools has several former law enforcement officers with extensive tactical training and experience. These safe school members would also participate and monitor the training in conjunction with the VBPD. Once the program has been approved by the school board, the Office of Safe Schools, along with the VBPD, will ensure that all armed security assistants will receive extensive training, maintain required firearms qualifications, and only utilize approved equipment and weapons. Of course, enhanced compensation for these members would need to be considered as well. In an effort to provide the safest environment for our staff and our students, I believe the approval of this program would serve to bolster our ability to respond to critical incidents more effectively. We greatly value our partnership with the Virginia Beach Police Department. This program would not be possible without their support. The Office of Safe Schools and the VBPD partners believe this is an attainable and effective means of supplementing our current efforts in keeping our students, faculty, staff, safe. So what we are seeking now from the school board is approval to continue developing the proposal of armed security program. The next phases would include identifying willing and qualified security assistants, developing training modules with the Virginia Beach Police Department, and researching the expected cost.
Thank you. And we will start with Mrs. Anderson.
I'm in favor of this. I think this is something that we need to do to meet the needs of the SROs that are not currently able to do both, both jobs. So, and I understand, according to the news, we have a big weekend this weekend. It's already started at the beach, and I'm sure some of our SROs are probably being called to participate in some of the beach activities now, even currently, for this week. So I think this is something that we need to do for the protection of our students and staff, so.
Thank you. Just for the record, Chief Nutigate and Deputy Chief Adams were invited today, but they're over at city council, meeting with them about beach weekend at this time.
I figured that. Thank you.
Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you. I don't recall anything in the last several years that required an emergency that required a police officer to carry a gun. Is that what you're saying? All, you want all these security officers to carry guns?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We have, we have over 200 security assistants that work within our system. We are proposing that a small majority, a small multitude of those officers who are retirees, former retirees of law enforcement agencies, we put them through training and then ask them to carry a gun. So it's a small number, and we have not-
How would they be spread out?
So there's work to be done. If you approve this, we, we have work to do. But we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves, and we didn't want to, you know, put the cart before the horse. So if you give us the authority to go forward with this, and we're in favor of it, then we will work out the details and come back to you with how we would spread our employees out, how it would look, and how many we have. We have not even surveyed our employees to see who would actually want to do this program. We know that we have about 15 that qualify, but we need to still survey them to ask, to make sure that they have maintained their firearm qualification, their retiree firearm qualifications, and then to make sure that they want to do this program. So we have work to do.
Yeah. Looking on it now, I don't see the need to arm people in schools, but, you know, I can be convinced otherwise.
I understand. Keep in mind, we have been in COVID in the past, you know, couple of years, and schools have looked a little different, and we're getting back to normal. And in years past, I think prior to COVID, you saw that there were incidents around the country that would alarm us.
All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Riggs.
I agree. I think it's time to do this as well. I'm glad you guys are being proactive and come forward with it to share this with us. It obviously, like you said, this, the chief said this is not going to change for a while, because they're not getting recruits to fill these positions. We need to keep our schools safe. There has been too much across the country. There's also so much going on, and so much that has happened for mental stability with our students and citizens and everyone else these last couple of years. It has really taken a toll on people with COVID. I think it's time to make sure that we do have our schools safe. I feel comfortable. I know that I, being at Larchford, we had, you know, retired police officers for our security. And I felt very comfortable, and I would feel comfortable with them to have firearms. I know most of them have probably kept their certification. And if they don't feel comfortable doing it, they won't.
That's correct.
Exactly. So thank you for being proactive and looking into this and getting this started.
Thanks. A couple of things to point out. One, we don't know the number of employees that would be interested in doing this. We don't know yet. So that's a number that we will find out once we move forward. And this in no way, shape, or form replaces our SRO program. This is a supplement. And, you know, we value the SRO program. There are so many other things that a police officer gives us in the school besides armed protection. This is just filling the armed protection gap of the SRO. We are counting on Chief Nutigate to put those officers back in our schools in September.
Okay, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Hughes, or Wiens, excuse me.
Thank you. Hopefully he does continue, okay. I, I have some questions. Not necessarily for today's meeting, but I would like to have us get some additional information. I'm not sure exactly what the criteria is in terms of the police department requiring retirement. I know that there were some news and some discussion. We had one of our SROs, he'd been with us for a while, and we left him, and he retired, left spring run. He, I know he still does a lot of, serving a lot of roles, and maybe does some security assistance stuff. But I'm wondering if there is a reason that the police department is saying that they are not going to have officers working for them carrying guns after a certain age? Is there something different that says the police don't want them to do that in the general public, that we want them to do that around the children? And not that I'm saying that there is a limitation, I don't know. But I would like to understand more about what those limitations are that they're requiring that retirement from the police force, even though they have these critical shortages? And that we would not have that? And would there be some limitations? Obviously, we don't want to have ageism, but if we have older adults who stayed working for us for a long time, are we going to have, is there any age restrictions? Are there any physical restrictions, the same way to be a uniformed officer? They have, you know, criteria for their physical and mental health. Are we taking that on? Are there changes to insurance coverage that we need to look at? I don't know if we have all that information, but these are the things that I would want to know more about before I got on board or against this proposal.
Yes, ma'am. Completely understand your concerns. There are requirements that these folks would have to meet, and one of them is within 10 years of retirement. So there are requirements along the lines of what you're talking, and we can get you all that information.
Okay. Thank you. And do we know if there's a change to what we would need to carry insurance-wise to, I guess, ensure the liability situation of having armed personnel versus previously? I assume that was picked up from the VPD?
Yes, ma'am. So Steve Lapock is our risk manager. He's been completely dialed into the process, and he will continue to be moving forward. So if the school board gives approval tonight, then we would move forward and more fully develop the program and come back and answer all those questions and the specifics at a later time.
Okay. Okay. I would want that additional information. And to try and understand, and kind of the level of need. If we have anything that says how often, if at all, we've had to have armed interventions in our district, or if this is more of a precautionary based on what we're seeing in other places in the country? I'm curious how other districts are handling this.
So I'll address that one because it's, because I've heard it come up twice. You ended with how other districts are handling it. Just remember, this is related to how we are positioned in Virginia Beach from a police department standpoint. And we have a, an area, beach, that draws crowds that Chief Nutigate and the police department are trying to find a balance with. I've heard mentioned twice, the, have we experienced anything that would require an armed presence? From a preparation standpoint, you are not in a position where you just observe what has happened to us, because quite honestly, that's the common story, is we never would have thought it would have happened in our community. And for members of the boards that were around when we initially came back with recommendations following the Blue Ribbon Panel, we shared how other divisions, which looked very similar to us, which I think is surprising to a lot of people, because they think that happens in places that don't look like Virginia Beach. And as a reminder, we had something very close to home in Virginia Beach that was a similar incident. So it isn't, you don't wait to prepare until an incident happens. You prepare in advance to prevent it from occurring, number one. And then, number two, to be able to respond as quickly as possible to mitigate any additional damage. So that's, as it reflects to, what have we seen for our need? We're not looking at just what has occurred in Virginia Beach. We're looking broadly at a national challenge, and how do we best position ourselves in Virginia Beach and keep our students safe?
We have Mrs. Wiens and Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I totally support this. Thank you. We need SROs in the building. And until we can get them fully back in every building, we definitely need a sense of security. Like you said, it's a deterrent, it's preventive. So I'm totally supportive of this. Thank you. Have you ever, have we looked in military? I mean, as far as, you know, we're using retired police officers. How about the military?
Yes, ma'am. So currently, the statutes include retired law enforcement that we could quickly get up into this program. We could expand this program, if we wanted to, to other employees. But right now, the state doesn't provide for that with retired military. It's retired law enforcement officers that would meet the criteria quickly.
Okay, that might be something, obviously, that, that we or the state or somebody needs to, you know, really pursue that, because where we are, military would make sense.
We are in the infancy of this program, obviously, and, you know, potentially, it could grow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I'm completely on board with this as well. And I like the point that you made about being prepared ahead of time. It's, it's very, very true. We don't want to- We don't want to wait until something happens and then decide to prepare. And just kind of anecdotally, I've worked for a company one time who had security and their armed security, and they never got robbed. And after two years, they say, we never got robbed, we don't need them, so they let the security guard go. We were robbed the next night. So I think that's an important thing. He was a deterrent. So I think that this is a good idea, and I think we should move forward with it.
Thank you.
So looking to wrap this up, I'll just share, for me, this does strike me as very common sense, and it's not to dismiss the concerns that have been expressed by a few colleagues, and I, I'm assured that you have provided enough information to assure us that the proper parties are being, are part of this whole discussion, and that you'll be coming back to us at some point, I presume, just with updated information, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we have our final workshop matters. School admin, the building we presently are in at the moment, the School Administration Building and the Holland Road Annex, and why do those two show up on the same line?
Well, I'm happy to be here tonight. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. We're here today to discuss upcoming work, actually, at the School Administration Building. There will be extensive amount of work coming up in the near future that cannot get postponed. We are in the fortunate position to also have Holland Road Annex, the reason you're seeing on the slide, to help alleviate space needs for a short period of time while this work will be conducted at the School Administration Building. As you can see on the slide before you, we have a floor plan of the School Administration Building. Its building systems, as originally designed, are unfortunately very aged and have been causing issues throughout the building for some time. Several years ago, in 2018, as you may recall, we had the opportunity to remove the building from the municipal center's central plant and their cold water loop in order to replace that system with a chiller. This helped to improve the building system's ability to better control temperature and humidity. However, this first phase of the solution did not solve all problems and did not replace major components of the aged building systems that are still in need of replacement today. We now have the opportunity to correct ventilation and better adjust airflow temperatures to our building systems in this next phase I'm talking about now. By removing the building from the municipal center's hot water loop, we will get additional autonomy for our building systems and be able to replace them. In order to come off of the city's hot water loop, we will be installing new components to the heating and cooling HVAC delivery system, a new boiler, associated electrical modifications, and improved ventilation throughout the building. This will allow all areas of the School Administration Building to now be properly cooled and heated, and most importantly, resolve the temperature and humidity issues that staff and the public have been experiencing in almost all areas of the building for several years. This upcoming work will be extensive and will impact nearly all office spaces within the School Administration Building, which much of the work being involved above the ceiling plenum. We'll also be taking this opportunity to make some modifications to the school board room related to ceiling, lighting, and VBTV enhancements, as well as improvements in the front lobby with ceiling and lighting replacements. This work will be going out to bid, and we hope to bring you a recommendation for contractor services in May. So in order to do this extensive work effectively and safely, staff will have to move outside of the building for a period of time. We are planning for the use of the nearby Holland Road Annex during SAB construction to be utilized by staff as a temporary work location. We anticipate this move will occur from October to November of 2022 until the end of the school year. We have started the process for defining spaces at Holland Road Annex for offices to continue working together. With these moves and the related works impacting the entire School Administration Building, we also wanted to discuss with you today the location of school board meetings. Due to the impact of the work, school board meetings will not be able to be conducted at the School Administration Building. We recommend school board meetings occur in the auditorium of Holland Road Annex while construction at SAB is underway. We have found there is already extensive technology set up in this space, plenty of seating for the public, public access to meeting spaces, and the availability of VBTV. There will also be accommodations made close to the auditorium at Holland Road Annex for nearby workshops and other meeting spaces. Staff and offices that support the school board meeting processes will also be in close proximity to the auditorium space at Holland Road Annex. So as a recap, the extensive amount of work at the School Administration Building will preclude offices to be utilized during this time, roughly seven months, again, starting October, November 2022. We have planned for good options for all employees and the school board to continue their functions during this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, and we'll start with Mrs. Riggs.
Holland Road Annex is the old Kellum High School, right?
It is. It's the old Kellum High School, yeah. Right up the road on West Nick Road.
Yeah, the old Kellum.
Ms. Owens has her hand raised. Go ahead, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I'm just kind of curious if there's been any thought about moving the school board meetings anywhere else other than the Holland Road Annex, just in thinking if we are going to move out of the School Board Administration Building, even if it's just temporarily, that we attempt to have the meeting somewhere more centrally located? I don't know if Renaissance has space and accommodations that would meet that criteria, but it wanted it to be a thought for discussion, that if we're going to come out of the school board meeting, that we consider a more central location rather than a less central location than where we already are, which isn't convenient for most people in the city.
Yeah, so we will do anything the school board asks us to do. Now, as it relates to this, an advantage of being at Holland Road Annex where the staff works is all of the resources are currently there and housed at the place that we're doing the school board meeting. So it looks, it would look very similar to our functions here in the SAB, except the function has just moved to Old Kellum, Holland Road Annex. If we were to look at another site to do school board meetings, for every school board meeting, all of the staff who supports those meetings would leave to go over to that, wherever that was, and we would do the meetings there. Additionally, Holland Road Annex is a very short distance from here, so it's a very similar, I'll call it a plug and play, it's just, you're really just traveling to a different building that's in a similar location. So that being said, whatever the school board directs us to do to look at using other spaces, we will look into those.
Gotcha, and that makes sense. I understand, yeah, there's a bigger picture of dynamics there, but I would want to make sure that wherever we're having our meetings, that it is located on a bus line, that we know that transportation is going to be available for people to get to that location if we're going to be moving it so that we're still accommodating the public, even though we may not be in the easiest-to-reach location.
So that helps understand the question, and there is a, I can picture what I know is a relatively close bus stop that you essentially have to walk past the ball fields from the courthouse area to get there. It's not a long walk, but we can measure out how long that walk would be to see if it's suitable for access for our meetings, because the public access, we know how important that is.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Anderson.
Would it be possible to speak with H Hampton Road's transit system for a temporary stop added at the Holland Road Annex?
That's a potential option. As we analyze how close that stop is, to see if we would need to have an additional stop to make it more reasonable.
Might be something that we might want to ask.
And so as you say that, too, I would think that the standard would be as it is here, that it would not be appreciably further a bus stop than it is to here. So we'll check proximity of bus stops as it relates to the SAB and see how that compares to the closest bus stop that's currently there, and if that's unacceptable, then look and see if we can add a stop.
Okay.
And Mr. Dunmay need to weigh in on this, but from a technology standpoint, can you share where there would be benefits to having everybody together? Or to choose a location that already needs to be set up for the staff in this building? Is that a fair assumption?
Sure. We have been doing walkthroughs of the Holland Road Annex with School Division Services, and we figured out all the technology needs that should be found.
So in terms of the school board technology needs, is there an advantage there to keeping the technology in one that supports both efforts, the nine-to-five jobs and the twice-a-month school board meetings and committee meetings? Is there an advantage to keeping that all under one roof from a technology standpoint?
We can be pretty flexible and move that to a variety of different locations, but it certainly does help that it's all there in one spot, yes. I say that as in, for example, we are going to be doing the summer school board retreat at the PDC, right? So when we do that, that room needs to be reconfigured for that event, and then any subsequent events, that room would then need to be reconfigured again for any other events. If we keep it there at Holland Road Annex and that auditorium is used specifically for school board meetings, that technology can remain set up without all of the activities necessary to use that room for other events as well. Does that make sense?
Anybody else?
Just make a note, because it may, somebody might occur to them afterwards. So this is already, as you heard, we're prepared to put this out to bid. This is already in the CIP under the HVAC projects that you see in the line items, and so this was already planned and was the second phase of an ongoing project.
Yes, and as I mentioned, you'll see in May, we'll have a contractor to award.
So that's when we would see this again?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so that we're, so that we all understand the timeline, okay.
We'd start when?
So we would have-
October?
I'm sorry.
When would the meetings start at a different-
So the move would start, the moves would start end of October, beginning of November. There is some work at Holland Road Annex that will be going on as well to prepare some units that were damaged, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I think we're done.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our workshop, and we'll be reconvening here at 6 o'clock for the formal meeting. Meeting adjourned.